All right, everybody, thanks. Welcome to the Town Council Meeting for May 22, 2018. We'll open the meeting with the pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
Pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's time we take a moment of silence, reflect on our duties here, and remember all our veterans home and away and our first responders. In accordance with the Mass. General laws, we're taking the meeting. Is anyone else taping the meeting? Don't all jump at one time. All right, good. Public comments. Ryan, I think you're up right away. We're gonna make you eight bucks. Is that okay?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Figured we could give you a quick update on the parade and some of the Fourth of July festivities. Our parade planning is going on very well. We've got band contracts coming back, a lot of participant phones coming back. Mr. Carl looked my stuff to give me the mail from last week, so we're in good shape. The other part is we want to take the opportunity to announce our grand marshal. You know, we used to do a town meeting with our new form of government. We don't have a town meeting, and so...
So here we are.
So here we are.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here once again, and this is our 20th year that we have a grand marshal for the parade. Some of the activities that they have been involved in that led to this honor have been obviously very visible in the town. They have served on town committees. They're an active member of the civic group or a service organization through a business or religious affiliation. They have been involved. Basically, they have worked to better our community and contribute to the quality of life at East Lawn Metal. It's been an honor to be able to present all of them, as it is tonight as well. I'll read the names of our past grand marshals, some of whom are not with us, but their legacies live on. Marshall Hansen, Joe Scanlon, Richard Clark, Baba Tran Ghezi, Willie Ferreira, Chandler Newell, Jim Connor, Mike Boucher, Merrill Stafford, Bob Hildreth, Sue Demalvy, Marilyn Richards, Dan Lassadonia, Lloyd Holtz, Jim Rintoul, Jim Davis, Ned Olveneser, Connie Wiswicky, and Foy, and Ray Miller. I think you may have recognized their names, and as I said, one common element besides the fact that these candidates all have been active before they were grand marshals, they continue to be so. So they've got a vested interest in that community, and they were fortunate to have.
So I'll give a couple of quick accomplishments from our marshal I've selected this year. By no means is a full representation of this person's character, but just kind of some of the highlights. This person was a teacher in our school system at Berchley, at the high school, was the assistant principal of the high school, was on the school committee, also was very active in coaching as far as wrestling, soccer, golf coach. Is in the educators' Hall of Fame, the coaches' Hall of Fame, coaching Hall of Fame, in the New England Wrestling Hall of Fame. Has also received the Unico Award, was a high school wrestling referee, college referee, and past president of the officials' association. I'd like to take the opportunity to announce our grand marshal, Bob Mazarello, Mr. Mayor.
So Bob, I hate to tell you this, but I did ask you to come and give us an update on the... I don't know if you really need to, because this is the reason why you're here. But while you're here, you might as well.
You're gonna hear it.
So you're up now, I guess.
I thought when my wife walked in she was here, because she had already told me, "Don't speak too long." I have a sheet here that gives quite a bit of information about our Hall of Fame. I'd like to take credit for it, but Ned Olveneser, my secretary...
Congratulations. I know you'll never believe me when I call you and I should do something to you.
Right, right. He prepared this for us. He's unbelievable. He's, of course, been on our committee since the beginning. And Carl Owen, who's also on our committee, a big contributor. For your information, I was on the sixth tee at Franconia yesterday when I got the call from Kevin. Okay? And I won't blame him for my hitting a bad tee shot, but, you know, it did catch me a little off-guard. Once again, good evening. Let me begin by thanking the council for the invitation to speak to you regarding a topic that is very important to me and to my colleagues, the East Lawn Metal High School Athletic Hall of Fame Committee. I will attempt to keep my remarks brief, and I've already explained that our secretary, Ned Olveneser, has prepared this information sheet for your benefit. And my goal this evening is to explain who we are, what we do, and why we do it. Okay? The East Lawn Metal High School's mission statement is as follows, and it's on your sheet, and allow me to read it. Our Hall of Fame is exactly... I'm sorry. It's right here. The East Lawn Metal High School Athletic Hall of Fame will honor former athletes, coaches, and contributors to the proud tradition of athletics in the town of East Lawn Metal, Mass. The Athletic Hall of Fame will induct new members each year. A permanent exhibit at East Lawn Metal High School will be established to publicly display a record of the accomplishments of those honored. Our Hall of Fame is exactly that. It's a hall. It's running from the front door of the high school to the cafeteria alongside the main gym, okay? Next to the main gym. Our excellent individual plaques have recently been beautifully upgraded and displayed. We realize that there is a space constraint in the high school, but we are hopeful that eventually we might have a more appropriate place. We encourage all of you to visit our Hall of Fame display. This is our eighth year in existence. Our first president was Dr. Chuck Reddington. His daughter Laura is also a member of our Hall of Fame, the wonderful young lady she is. It's my honor to have been president for the last seven years. Our Hall of Fame researchers conduct a very thorough evaluation of each candidate to ensure that they are best qualified in order to be inducted into the Hall of Fame. We also provide an annual Hall of Fame induction dinner to honor both past and present inductees. A very attractive program is given to all who attend the dinner. These programs are available for reading at the East Lawn Metal Public Library. I will refrain from mentioning our committee by name and what their functions are, but suffice it to say that they are extremely dedicated to our mission statement. Most of the committee has been with us since the start. And finally, believing that our future Hall of Famers are the youth of our community, the Hall of Fame has been providing financial assistance to our town's recreation department in order to give scholarships to our needy youth so that they can attend summer camps. I thank you for the opportunity to address the council this evening, and if there are any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Coach.
Thank you.
You can call us two things. That's good.
Did you know about this, too?
I did not. I love that.
It's too bad you couldn't get the look on his face while you were reading it.
Yeah, when he started realizing...
Yeah, we started going to commenting stuff.
Nice surprise.
All right, so I'll have to counsel comments. Any? I just had one. Chris Heron is actually speaking at St. Michael's on June 7 at the St. Michael's Parish Hall. For those people that don't know, Chris Heron is a former Boston Celtic athlete who actually ended up addicted to drugs and alcohol and is a motivational speaker now and talks about his recovery. It's a... I've seen him in videos. There's actually a movie out there, but he spoke, I guess, last night in West Springfield, but it's kind of a neat thing to have him come to town and I'm sure it'll be... It starts at 7, I believe.
When is it?
June 7 at 7 o'clock. So I just thought that was... I actually got it in my mailbox today at Town Hall and thought it was interesting, so I would share it.
What's the venue?
It's at St. Michael's Parish Hall.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Now Denise, you're up.
Good evening, everyone. Our new planner, Connie Browders, has been here a little over a month and has already implemented a number of changes in the way to do business with the planning department and the planning board. The department is introducing new forms for applicants to create a more efficient permitting process, and also similar to the building department, she is implementing electronic rather than paper copies of things and files. So we are starting to do less paper and more electronic filing. So we'll have to talk to the IT guy and make sure that we're not promoting something that's a monster down the road, but I think we're doing good there. The health department's car seat installation event was a success with 25 car seats installed and three seats replaced due to safety issues. Health Inspector Donna Bowman and four volunteers that were licensed helped install and process the residents so that there was an efficient process. In addition to installing car seats, the health department was present to do education, outreach, and raffle on compost bins for the public. Also, you may have seen the new recycling initiative that we've got in Town Hall. We've got the paper, trash, and cans and bottles bins in various places. I think there's... Yeah, I put a copy of the flyer for that. So we're trying to reduce our waste stream, and the best place to start is our own backyard. The road work and traffic signal improvements related to medical building construction projects on Maple and Dwight will begin shortly and will likely last through the end of this year. I'm not gonna sugarcoat it. It's gonna be terrible. So try to avoid it if you can. We're going to be sending a message to all the residents to tell them to start thinking about alternate routes, to just stay away from that area if they can, because it will be a lot of disruption. They're doing road work, utilities, new lights, so there's gonna be poles moving. It will be a big mess. So it's the pain before we get to the progress. Also, Public Works will be continuing a water main project on Maple Street up to Savoy in later this month or early June. I don't think they've started it. I haven't gone down there this week.
They have.
They have not. I've received final... We've received final recommendations from the Collins Center regarding the wage study, the Omen Resources, and finance directors are working out how to implement this with the town employees' union, which is the more difficult piece of it. There are now, I think, 20 tiers of employees that are gonna be folded into nine tiers with the spreadsheet. I'm doing this because the spreadsheet looks about this lawn with the different levels of wages depending on the grade within the tier. So there's... We've got to figure out how to implement that in a logical, fair way and address the issues that are pointed out in the Collins Center study. I'll be bringing some kind of report to you all once we've got the implementation piece done and have a better understanding of everything that this final recommendation is going to impact. Along those lines, I've also begun to do performance reviews and salary adjustments for managers that report directly to me. That kind of was hinged on the Collins study as well, so they're relieved to finally be getting that piece done. Fire Department news, and we've got a few pieces of Fire Department news. The four most recently hired firefighters, Antonio Rosado, Joshua Rattula, Nick LaRoche, and Rebecca Jarvis, are graduating from the Massachusetts Firefighters Academy Recruit Career firefighter training program. That's helpful. And in my report, it has where that graduation is located. It's open to the public if you all want to attend. The firefighters learn basic firefighting skills along with training in public education, hazardous material incident mitigation, flammable liquids, stress management, and water rescue procedures. The intense 10-week program involves classroom instruction, physical fitness training, firefighter skills training, and live fire practice. It truly is a very intense program. Upon completion, students have met national standards for the National Fire Protection Association 1001 and are certified to the level of firefighter 1 and 2 and hazardous materials first responder operational level. So they come on board very well-prepared, and we're looking forward to adding them to our staff. Also, firefighters Michael Minahan and Matthew Torowski have successfully completed the Massachusetts Firefighting Academy's 320-hour hazardous material technician program. And we were talking about it, I think it was this morning, Michael was in the room with us, and he said, "I am so glad to get that done." The skills they acquire through the training prepares them to begin the mitigation of a hazardous material incident within the community, which, again, is a pretty serious set of circumstances if they occur. Finally, the Fire Department's new Pierce 107-foot ascendant aerial truck... Did I get that right, Paul? Is scheduled for delivery Tuesday, May 29, with plans to have the truck in service by July 1. So we're all looking forward to seeing that piece of equipment. If you all have not seen the ambulance, please stop and visit that as well. It's spectacular. I have a list of upcoming events as reminders for you all. Memorial Day steps off at the high school at 10:30 on the 28th. June 21 is the kickoff to the summer reading program, and the director, the library director, has a Gori program set up. June 29 to July 4 is the parade carnival and all of that. And August 25 is Laura Cunningham Memorial Blood Drive at Heritage Park from 8 to 5. That's all I have this evening. Thank you.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve the May 2018 open session minutes as scheduled.
Is there a second? Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Subcommittee report. Done.
Yeah, social media. I spoke with Ryan Quimby today, and you can still hang out for just a couple seconds. And what we're trying to do is, I'm trying to get closure on the committee, and I think the limitations we have with our contract with our website is, means we have to go a different direction. And so I looked at what Springfield was doing, and Ryan pointed out that our current Facebook page, we don't have to create a second one. It already has about 2,500 followers on it. So what we're thinking of doing is taking the information that we're... Like, you can look at what we're getting on our computer. We get everything as a PDF file. But PDF doesn't lend itself up to uploading on Facebook. So what I've done on my own personal Town Council page is I've taken, like, I have today's agenda. I converted it to a JPG file, and Ryan told me you can even convert it to a PNG file as well. So, and we are... And the town already has the software. So if we can come up with an idea, because, you know, anything that's being published, almost like a town, you know, town crier page within our town page, because... So it goes in... So I also went to the town clerk's office. I spoke with Janie, and I spoke with Tom. And on a trial, if we can, again, it's a matter of logistically doing it, when a PDF comes in, have it converted to a JPG or a PNG, and simply give administrative status to people in the Town Council, I mean, in the Town Clerk's Office, and then upload it, just as you would put it on a wall, upload it to the Facebook page. It would also cross-post onto a Twitter page so that if people are trying to look at what our agenda is, they don't have to, like our current thing, press this, then go to another page, and then try to do other page. You know, most people are not using laptops or they're using smartphones. And this makes it much more smartphone-friendly doing it this way. So whatever somebody would see at the Town Hall's board, they'd be able to see on our Facebook page. And all it simply would be, you know, Town Council meeting, May 22, and then a JPG of our agenda. So it's very low work intensity. It's just at the end of the day, we just have to figure out, you know, who's gonna take ownership of making this happen. And it's just basically a tweak to what's already going into the Town Clerk's Office. So stay tuned.
All right. Anything for planning?
Nothing at the moment.
All right. Town manager performance evaluation subcommittee report. So Kathy, I think you're on that, right?
Yes, we gave the report... I gave the report at the last meeting. Is this just a matter of including the minutes?
For you, yeah. You guys, you three just have to approve the minutes, but Paul's not here, so...
Want to just table that to the next one, then?
Sure. It's been posted on the website.
Yeah, they can't be posted until it's approved.
No, the evaluation itself.
It is.
We'll just...
Do it next meeting.
Pass this on to the next one? Tom? We'll table this number 7, 3, to the next meeting, because Paul's not here.
Paul's not...
And there's only three people on the committee. I mean, we can approve it with the two of us, but probably should wait.
Easy enough.
Okay.
Budget Subcommittee report. So we have to approve the minutes first. So for the three of us that were there, it's Mike, Kathy, and myself. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the May 14, 2018, open session minutes of the Budget Subcommittee.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Sure. All in favor?
Aye.
And then also, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the May 15, 2018, open session minutes of the Budget Subcommittee.
So moved. Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And so our Subcommittee report was, obviously, we met on those two days extensively with Denise and Sarah and department heads, and reviewed significantly every sort of portion of the budget that we could possibly think of in order to get the budget that we're gonna talk about later tonight down to what we thought was a reasonable tax rate that was able to still provide services that we have, existing services, increasing the fire service and the police, and the dispatch, maintaining educational programs that they need. And it was a very difficult process, and it took a long time, but with everybody's cooperation, it seemed to work out so far, so good. We'll see later on at the public hearing. But other than that, not much to report. It was a successful two days. Everybody that participated, and I think we had great dialogue with Gordon and his staff at that meeting, and that helped a lot for us to understand some of the things that they were requesting too. So I thought it was very productive, and that's all I have for that one.
Yeah, Joe.
And just, not for really necessarily debate today, but just for us as a group to, early into next fiscal when we get through this, to really work out a better process and not try to approve a budget through supplemental wish lists.
Already being done.
Right.
That was one of the recommendations that came out of that, was actually that they will, we won't be doing a supplemental next year in the process by which it's presented, and when we start, we'll be a little bit earlier with some direction on what we expect early so that they can get moved forward.
Very good.
Working with Denise to make sure that happens in a better way. Orders day, licensing matters. All right. So we have a one-day liquor license for the Masonic Temple for June 2, 2018. So I'll entertain a motion to approve a one-day liquor license for the Masonic Temple for June 2, 2018, for 5:00 p.m. to midnight for a birthday party.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that was the... Next one. I'm gonna entertain a motion to approve a one-day liquor license for the Masonic Temple for June 9, 2018, for 6:00 to 11:00 p.m., also for a birthday party.
So moved. Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The packages are attached. So I'm gonna entertain a motion to approve a one-day liquor license for the Masonic Temple for June 15, 2018, for 5:00 to 11:00 for ladies' night.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Old business we have none. New business, we have a zone change petition request from John and Stephen Davis for parcel 13-35-0244 Shaker Road. Realistically, what we're looking here to do is we're gonna refer, the recommendation is refer back to planning for their review, so I'm gonna entertain a motion to refer the zone change petition request from John and Stephen Davis to parcel 13-35-0 located at 244 Shaker Road to the Planning Board for a public hearing. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion?
I think there might be some discussion. I know, I believe the petitioner is here at this point, and we had a chance to look at this, and I think myself, I also spoke with Connie, the town planner, and I think one of the concerns that we have is, and now, again, whether...
I'm thinking probably the best place to do that is planning in your Subcommittee once it comes through, right?
Yeah, but the other thought is, do we even want to send this back to the Planning Board? And that's, I think, that's the part of this discussion that's gonna be at this point, is we had this recent matter with the M&amp;M petition where we didn't, we told them, we said, "We don't want to discuss zone changes at this point in that particular location until we have a new master plan." So now we're right down the street, and we're wondering, is that, is this consistent with that? Or, I'm asking, again, I wanna, obviously, we all want council input, that's why we're here. So do we say, this being consistent with it, hold off until we get a master plan, then resubmit, and then send it to the Planning Board? Or allow them, allow it to go to the Planning Board, then come back over here? So that's what I want to...
It may not come back here.
It may not come back here. So...
Which is why it goes to planning for the experts to have that discussion.
Well, that's why I wanted to, you know, throw it out for discussion, see what the rest of you guys thought.
I would say, do we have representation for the petitioner at this point?
This is the architect.
Hi, Rob.
Hi there. Good evening. I'm not sure if this is working or not. Hello?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Again, for record, I'm not with that community, I'm with my associates. I'm here this evening for the Salma Realty. Salma Realty is the applicant, not the owner. The Davis family is the owner. Salma Realty is an arm of the local pumpkin donuts franchisee. Peter Martins is their real estate, real estate person associated with the family. He pursues new locations, store locations within Western Massachusetts. They have about 50 stores. So the request for the zone change that you see for you this evening, am I right? So the request for the zone, zone change that you see for you this evening, am I right?
If it's helpful to the council, the applicant is looking to pursue, you know, a development there in a reasonable timeframe. So this is not something they're planning for years down the road. This is something they certainly would like to pursue late season, if humanly possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks for being here.
Yep, thank you.
Appreciate it.
So is the motion already...
Motion's on the floor, it's seconded, so if there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Financial matters. Discussion to accept the veterans exemptions under Mass General Law 59, Section 5, at the local level.
This is something that doesn't need to be voted on tonight, however, because it requires a public hearing, would not have meant the fourteen days advertised for it to be read for the first time tonight. I just wanted to let you guys know, if you have a handout, in what is being proposed, you know, in the way of the director of assessing here, and I don't know if you'd like to come up and talk about it?
Sure, why not?
That's one piece, because the other two, I think, we've got to be serious.
These are for all of these?
No.
Or just the first one?
It's just the first one. And then there's another piece that the...
Sarah can talk about it.
So the board of assessors at their March, beginning of March meeting, we discussed, and they was fully supportive of putting this before the town council for a vote, to see if we could change the waiting period for veterans who were not domiciled in Massachusetts at the time of enlistment. Right now, they have to wait a five-year period before they can receive a veteran's exemption if they have a disability. And we recently learned that the laws have changed, and by local acceptance, we could reduce it down to a one-year waiting period. And it was the board of assessor, in my opinion, that the veteran didn't have to serve Massachusetts, they served our country, and we want them to be able to receive a veteran's exemption sooner than later. They are all verified through the Veterans Administration. We've had maybe three in my tenure since I've been here that have had to wait a five-year period, and three is too many right now. It's minimal to the town for cost. We would have to incur, normally, we wouldn't have to have any exemption for the first five years. It's $175 that the town would have to cover for the first five years. By changing it, it's a very small, small amount. And the state does reimburse us through our reimbursements on an annual basis for the remainder. So we are fully in support of it, and we hope that the town council will be in support for us to be able to change the waiting period.
All right, thank you. Seems pretty kind of intense to me. Do we have a public hearing at 6:30? Late?
Did they want to? Do you want to just do these last two?
Let's do them real quick.
Okay. So the, the last two are the, to accept the deferral of taxes under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5L. So what this would do is, while a member is in the military and is on active duty, borders outside of Massachusetts, that any real estate taxes that would be owed would be deferred until they returned, up to 180 days after they returned, and no interest or penalties would be assessed. The other one that we are talking about is the deferral of excise tax under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 60A, Section 9, and this would do the same thing but for your excise tax, so that while they were away on active duty serving our country, that then they wouldn't receive any penalties or interest. And they would still owe the tax when they returned, but there would be no penalties or interest up to 180 days after they returned from their active duty.
Most incoming, that's two. Very much.
And what'll happen, Kevin, is the next meeting, we'll have our first reading according to the charter. The second reading can take place June 26th, so we'll have it accepted if the council does read to it by July 1st.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Don't go anywhere, Sarah.
Oh, don't worry.
You're on the bylaw.
Is there a public hearing?
It's public hearing for bylaws. So you're gonna, it's your chapter or the bylaws?
And I will sit.
All right, so we'll start the public hearing. The reason for the public hearing is to read for the first time a new proposed general bylaw for revolving funds. Also to discuss and review proposed changes to the current bylaws and implementation of these changes into the final document moving forward. Council members are O'Connor, Ford, Manley, Anderson, Hill, and Kane. I'm gonna open the public meeting and have the clerk read the notice into the record.
The East Long Meadow Town Council will hold a public hearing on May 22nd, 2018, at 6:30 PM, in the media room of the council on aging located on 328 North Main Street, to address changes and updates to the town's general bylaws, town input by department heads in the wake of a new charter. Information related to general bylaw updates are on file with the town clerk and available for review by the public. For the council, Thomas Florence, clerk of the council.
Thanks, Tom. So now we're gonna read into the record the...
In this for statutory requirements, is a bylaw that must be accepted by July 1st.
Gotta find it. Hold on, I just gotta find what I gotta read. It's 11, right? Chapter 11.
It's the very last page.
Yeah, I think it's 9A.
Oh, chapter, hold on. Chapter 11, Department Revolving Funds. Purpose: This bylaw establishes and authorizes revolving funds for use by town, departments, boards, committees, agencies, and officers in connection with the operation of programs or activities that generate fees, charges, or other receipts to support all or some of the expenses of these programs or activities. These revolving funds are established under and governed by General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half. Expenditure limitations: A department, agency, head, board, committee, or officer may incur liabilities against and spend monies from a revolving fund established and authorized by this bylaw without appropriation subject to the following limitations. Fringe benefits of full-time employees whose salaries or wages are paid from the fund shall also be paid from the fund. No liability shall be incurred in excess of the available balance of the fund. The total amount spent during the fiscal year should not exceed the amount authorized by the town council on or before July 1st that fiscal year, or any increased amount of that authorization that is later approved during the fiscal year by the town council and town manager. Interest: Interest earned on monies credited to a revolving fund established by this bylaw shall be credited to the general fund. Procedures and reports, except as provided in General Law 44, Section 53E and a half in this bylaw, the laws, charter provisions, bylaws, rules, regulations, policies, or procedures that govern the receipt and custody of town monies and the expenditure and payment of town funds shall apply to the use of a revolving fund established and authorized by this bylaw. The town accountant shall include a statement of the collections credited to the fund, the encumbrances and expenditures charged to each fund, and the balance available for expenditure. In the regular report, the town accountant provides the department, board, committee, agency, or officer on appropriation made for, made for its use. Authorized revolving funds, the table establishes that each revolving, A, each revolving fund authorized for use by town, department, board, committee, agency, or other officer, the department or agency head, board, committee, or other officer to spend from each fund, the fees, charges, and other monies charged and received by the department, board, committee, agency, or officer in connection with the program or activity for the fund, for which the fund is established, that shall be credited to each fund by the town accountant. B, the expenses of the program or activity for which each fund may be used. E, any restrictions or conditions on expenditures from each fund. F, any reporting or other requirements that apply to each fund. G, the fiscal years, each fund shall operate under this bylaw. And attached is the chart, which is, A, revolving funds, solid waste, council on aging, department... So the solid waste fund is authorized to spend is the health department. Fees, charges, and other receipts credited to or trash bag receipts, recycling rebates, the program or activity expenses payable from fund is salaries, expenses, and contractual expenses to operate the solid waste disposal and recycling program. Restrictions or condition that expenses payable from the fund, this time, there's none. Other requirement, other requirements or reports, annual reconciliation of internal records compared to the general ledger must be provided to the town accountant by July 31st in the fiscal years, it's fiscal year 18 and subsequent years. Excuse me. Council on Aging. The department authorized to spend the funds is the council on aging. Council on Aging, the fees, charges, or other receipts credited to the fund, council on aging, general programming, and activities such as, but not limited to, fitness room membership, exercise class fees, event fees, facility and room rental. Program or activity expenses payable from salaries, expenses, and contractual expenses to operate the general programming and activities. Restrictions is none. Other requirements or reports, annual reconciliation of internal records compared to the general ledger must be provided to the town accountant by July 31st. Carryover on spent rental funds is allowed. This is fiscal years, is fiscal year 2018 and subsequent years. And department, 2012, that's the health department, right?
Health department.
It's the health department, the department using it is the health department, it's the Sharps Recycling Program. They're using revenues from such containers and, let's see. Sharps Recycling Programs, such as containers and advertisements, provide a Sharps Recycling Program in the computer, in the community, sorry. The annual, the reporting is reconciliation of internal records compared to the general ledger must be provided to the town accountant by July 31st, and this is also for 2018 and subsequent years. Okay.
End.
End, right? Okay. Okay, that one's good. So actually, now I'm gonna have a motion to continue the public hearing for a second reading of new revolving fund bylaw to June 12th, 2018, at 6:40. So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
My suggestion on bylaws, actually coming forward, is gonna be that we establish a subcommittee to look at the bylaws. I know there was some question on the document. It's huge to work with Tom and everybody else. The department has submitted this Google document, which you can debate its friendliness to non-computer people like myself. But I'm thinking that establish a bylaw subcommittee to actually go through the document that we've received with all the department head changes, and then do a final adoption of one, one full document. Discussion, I think, is three to four chapters at a time. Some of the changes are just sort of cosmetic, because it's language stuff that needs to change from selectmen to town council, or town manager, and town meeting to town council. Others are substantive changes that they've added, but nothing that's, gotta be done tomorrow. So I think we should probably talk about doing a subcommittee for that. So if there's any volunteers...
I'd like to be on that. Since I was on the original.
Yeah, that's what helped too, actually. That was...
I'd volunteer Paul, since he's not here.
Well, whoever's not here, whoever's not here gets it. Sounds good to me. I'm gonna make a motion to establish a general bylaw subcommittee to review all the chapters of the current bylaws, with the changes provided by the department heads and implementation of these changes, I don't know why I cannot say that word, of these changes, into a final document moving forward. I'll be on the bylaw committee, too.
Yeah, this is a two-part. This chapter 11 needs to be addressed immediately before July 1st, and the rest of them are substantive changes, or not so substantive.
Well, we have some that are substantive, but they're just not necessitated by July 1st.
Right.
What ended ultimately happening is, because chapter 11 is new...
Yeah.
There's no real requirement to have strikeouts and everything else, because we're not really changing anything, we're just amending. So we're gonna do the public hearing for that. 11 has to, we're on a time restriction to adopt it for July 1st, which is a new fiscal year.
So we can address that first in, in the subcommittee?
Right. So, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So Tom, it's me and you right now.
Okay.
And Paul, apparently, he volunteered, too. So let's go. All right. We'll come back from recess and start our public hearing for this proposed fiscal year 2019 budget. The reason for this public hearing is to present the proposed fiscal year 2018 operating budget as outlined, is it 18 or 19?
19, 19.
19, I'm sorry. 2019 operating budget is outlined in Article 6, Section 1, the summon of Home Rule Charter. Councillors are O'Connor, Ford, Manley, Anderson, Hill, and Kane. This is a public hearing, so at this time, I'll open the public hearing, and I will ask the clerk to read the notice into the record.
In conformity with the requirements of Mass General Law, the East Long Meadow Town Council hereby gives notice that it will hold a public hearing on May 22nd at 7:00 PM in the Council on Aging Media Room, 328 North Main Street, East Long Meadow, to review the proposed FY19 operating budget as outlined by Article 6, Section 1 of the East Long Meadow Home Rule Charter. For the town council, Thomas Florence, clerk of the council.
Thanks, Tom. So now we're gonna have us just a budget statement, and there's copies available up here on the table if anybody needs a copy of the proposed budget. So as in the past, this year's annual town budget was completed in collaboration with the school committee superintendent and all department heads. Department was asked, were asked to stay within a 2% increase over last year's budget. The departments were also tasked with submitting supplemental, supplemental budget requests for additional spending over the 2% increase, and the request for recovery by justifications for the additional spending. Now, the council convened a budget subcommittee to examine the annual budget and supplemental requests in order to examine closely the department budget and the request for any additional funding. The subcommittee considered the budget in accordance with the council's priorities. We have an increase in public safety, fiscal responsibility to the taxpayer, continued commitment to high-quality education while maintaining our services. This was an extremely taxing process that required thorough discussion and times difficult decisions. However, the overall process went smoothly and without significant issues. Like to take the time to recognize everyone involved in the process for their dedication, hard work, and commitment. As I had said before, the subcommittee had some very tough decisions to make, and we also had some very good dialogue with other departments. So that was one good thing. As a result of the process, the council has prepared the annual town budget for presentation to the public. We feel it's a fair and equitable budget that represents the best interest of the community as a whole. We all need to keep in mind that we are in the second year of a new form of government, and some expenditures reflect changes in departments and personnel that were necessary and required. We've seen cost savings in some areas and increases in other areas in order to address the town's needs in the most effective and efficient manner. Another challenge for both the current budget and the 2019 budget has been a plan to move into a partnership with the town of Hamden for emergency dispatch services. Additionally, this budget reflects increases to the fire department as a result of a continuation of the plan to expand operations to 24 hours and provide town-based emergency medical services. The following presentation reflects the council's operating budget for fiscal year 2019. The 2018 fiscal year budget came in at 50, total general fund sources, $58,393,139. 2019, that number's moved to $60,988,000, which is a million, rather, I'm sorry, increase of $2,595,367, or 4.44% overall. Sarah, you can take over anytime you're ready.
So then the general fund uses, 2018 was $54,694,454. FY19 recommended is $57,385,262, which incorporates the changes that Mr. Manley mentioned. Then we also have capital, capital projects, stabilization fund, OPEB trusts, the compensated absences, and other charges for a total of $2,480,569 in 2018, and the FY19... and other charges for a total of $2,480,569 in 2018, and the FY19 recommended is $1,921,254. For total general fund uses of $57,175,023 for FY18, and FY19 recommended is $59,306,516. The sources less the uses in FY2018 is $1,218,116, and FY19 recommended is $1,681,991. So essentially, that number is how much we would be leaving on the table from the maximum amount that you can tax using Prop 2.5. Okay? Do I just continue?
Oh, yeah.
So the next page is the sources in detail. One of the changes that we did compared to the last couple of budget meetings is that we did incorporate the, an estimated revenue for the ambulance service into this for $150,000. We also updated the state chapter 70 educational fund money due to what had been released by the state. And those are the big changes that we did to this page, otherwise it remains the same as previously.
Quick comment there, and I think Chief addressed this before. So when do you expect billing to start for the ambulance services, and do you feel that's pretty conservative estimate?
We do, we do feel that the $150,000 is very conservative. Since it's our first year, we're not sure exactly what our population entails. So you, you get billed, you can bill and you collect different amounts based on what the patient's insurance is, and so that makes a difference as to how much we will collect, which is why we wanted to stay on the conservative side. Once the ambulance is in service, then we will be able to start billing immediately. So the hope is as close to July 1st as possible. We do anticipate that we will exceed that, but we're not exactly sure at what rate. It would not be unrealistic to expect in a few years to be upwards of 400 or more thousand.
Very good.
Okay. Moving on for the operating budget. We do have incorporated into these the, the items that Mr. Manley stated. We did reduce more of the supplementals as discussed, and really left just what, what the council felt was necessary to continue, such as the additional election workers that were, are needed for the additional election, those kinds of things.
Can you just comment on that when the subcommittee got together, based on the tax rate, based on some of the things that we had discussed, generally the feeling was that $21,99 was originally what we were at. We were able to reduce, Denise actually was able to take some things off the table originally. It was reduced by about $450,000, give or take. We actually reduced it significantly from that. One of the, one of the ways, unfortunately, which we had to do was take any new positions that were added or requested, with the exception of one position that was requested by the school, the intensive special needs teacher, and that was based on the fact that the kids, it's, they've been in this program. It's a continuation of existing program. And realistically, no, no positions were, the subcommittee had agreed that no positions, no new positions will be funded through this budget. Some positions like fire, we increased hours at the administrative assistant level out there based on the ambulance, because they're gonna do billing, so that was one of the reasons why we increased that. Library, we did not touch because last year, library returned money to us and came in under the budget request, and they asked for a small increase.
Six hours.
$6,000, right?
Six hours.
And they asked for an increase of six hours and then a small increase for the CWMR certification. So that was some of the things that we looked at.
The other thing was the MS4 for DPW.
Oh, right.
Because it's the, the state mandate.
There is state mandated, but it's an unfunded mandate as usual with the state they mandated. And one of the things I could say about that, I'd like to take the time to thank Bruce for actually thinking outside the box and actually for that plan. Instead of coming to us and actually requiring, requesting rather, that he hire full-time employees to do the MS4 work, which certainly he could justify underneath the mandate, he actually came, thought outside the box, hired interns at a significantly lower rate, hired them on a part-time basis so they're not benefit employees, which actually helps us. So that's a, you know, that's a certainly kudos to Bruce for thinking how to get that done, especially when we're obligated to do it. So that was one of the other things that we looked at. We did look at revolving funds briefly. You wanna talk about that a little bit, just?
Do you wanna wait till we get to the revolving fund slide?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead. Yeah, we'll wait for that.
So the, you will notice that the capital projects amount is reduced from previously, and we can discuss that in a moment when we get to the capital slide. Are there any questions at this point on this?
Nope.
Okay. Moving on. The, the next item that you will see is that we have in here chapter 90. So chapter 90 is a state program. The DOT sends us a letter as to how much that we are eligible to receive in fiscal 19. You will see it at the bottom after the department-specific notes, it's on page 8.
There we go.
And so we received the, the letter from the Mass DOT, and so this authorizes us to spend that amount of money. This is a reimbursement grant, it's a five-year grant that we have with them, and they just send us what our portion is of this year. The next, page, page 9 and 10 contain the capital. You will notice we reduced more capital items in order to meet the town council's prerogative of a reduced tax rate. We did not change the recommended bonding for projects, and water and sewer we did not change as well. And just a reminder that we are recommending to bond the sewer projects, but the water projects we plan to pay for out of their retained earnings that they have.
And just to touch on the capital, we actually were able to find some creative ways to fund capital projects that look like, if you look at the original budgets that we had talked about and had been public, there were some projects under that looked like they just dropped off this, this list, and some of those would be important to people, like the school door project is one that came up that was, obviously in this day and age, we're talking about school security. So those two projects, actually that, and the intercom project were projects that, in an anomaly this year, the department, the school department is able to return or anticipates returning somewhere in the neighborhood of $100,000 based on some staffing changes that occurred that they could not end up filling at the, the same level. So they saved some money there. That money is actually coming back, so in the, in the, this year, we decided that we would fund those projects in this fiscal year through use of free cash, and we would reimburse the free cash expenditures for those projects when that money came back. So it's sort of like a little loan payment. Borrow money from ourselves and pay ourselves back, I guess, but they're actually gonna get done now.
Earlier.
They are gonna get done, and they're gonna get done earlier. Same thing you'll see when we get to capital was the police cruiser request, the two police cruisers because of the, the dispatch that was actually budgeted for and planned to be in last year, we funded it in last year's budget. We have money returned from the police department based on the fact that we didn't actually fill it. They had a capital request for $90,000, I'm just gonna throw a number out, it's around $90,000, because I don't remember exactly, but what we did with that money, the anticipated returns, we actually have them going out to buy those now. So we were able to get those projects completed and also take that off the capital plan so that it's not an expenditure from the tax, toward the tax rate, I guess, is.
Right, so all of these will be presented at the next town council meeting for the town council to officially vote for it to come from free cash. Once that happens, then, then they can go and buy.
Well, that's where we're at, but I mean, that's the plan.
Okay.
I think that's gonna happen, right?
I believe.
Anything else to talk about?
We removed the, the vaults, and that would, that would be the other thing that, that will be coming forward at a later point for free cash.
Is that free cash or CPC possibility?
For the vaults?
Yeah.
That is one of the things that we are looking into as to whether it would qualify for that. That did come up with the subcommittee.
And I know the software piece that we were looking for, for convocations, once this bylaw committee has gotten everything together, that's gonna be looked at through the community compact grant from the governor's office, so.
Yep.
Hopefully we'll get state money to get that as well.
So our next page, page 11, is the LCAT Enterprise Fund. There were no changes to this from our original budget discussion back in April. The next is the Sewer Enterprise Fund on page 12, and again, no changes since the April meeting. And, and this did include the rates that had been approved by the DPW board after that April 10th meeting. It happened after.
Can you go into a little detail on the reason for those increases?
Sure.
Can you go into a little detail on the reason for those and how they came about?
Sure. So with both water and sewer, actually, they, they both will be experiencing rate increases. And a big driver of that is the charges that we are receiving from Springfield Water and Sewer. So they are taking on a lot of projects for their infrastructure, and they pass on those charges to us. So this past year, we actually had, it was $120,000 to $125,000, I can't remember the exact amount, of additional charges that they passed on to us that were unexpected. What we have been doing over the past few years is subsidizing the rate increase with the retained earnings that we have for the enterprise funds in order to not make it a huge jump for our residents, but it does have to increase, the, the charges are increasing, and so we do have to do a gradual increase there. So that's what will happen for this year and next year, and I believe within, if I recall the spreadsheet, within the next five years, it should level out, and there shouldn't be any that we should be caught up to the estimates that we are receiving from Springfield Water and Sewer.
Correct.
Okay? Does that make sense?
I think also, there was a comparison that I think I emailed to all of you that shows that we are on the low side of other communities in the area, so.
Yeah.
We're not jumping significantly, and we're well within reason of other communities.
But the point that I'm glad Sarah made was for residents and taxpayers, that this is a cost that was passed on to us by Springfield Water and Sewer.
Correct.
Which we have no control over.
Correct. Yes, it's, it's.
Not in formal water.
No. Or sewer.
Or sewer. Poorly sewer, I think.
Page 13 is the Water Enterprise Fund, and again, no changes from the April meeting that we had. And you, to, to go to your point, Tom, on this page 13, you will see the second line from the bottom, it says retained earnings there. And so you can see in the 2019, $290,887, that's essentially the amount that we are taking out of the water retained earnings in order to subsidize the rate. So that's how you would see it as a resident, if you were looking at these, that's what that means. So they would go up even more if we weren't doing that. Okay? Page 14, you will see the revolving funds. And so as, as Mr. Manley suggested, that we discuss this in detail at our subcommittee meeting, I wanna say it was somewhere around 45 minutes worth of conversation.
Just this part of it, yeah.
Yes. And so we looked at each one in detail as to the history of it, what's happened in the past, what the plans were as they were presented last year, and the plans continuing going forward, and what we can and cannot use the, the funds for. The subcommittee then decided that we would not be asking to take any money out of here. If the subcommittee or the town council were to do something like that, it would be something that would benefit fiscal 18, it wouldn't actually help fiscal 19 anyway, because if you, if you do see something, it has to happen in that same year, you can't defer it to later, if there was an error or something of that nature. Next is page 15. This is the Community Preservation Fund. So this is the standard allocation of, everybody receives a surcharge, well, pretty much everybody receives a surcharge on the real estate taxes related to the Community Preservation Fund. This was something that was adopted at town meeting, and that these are the same percentages and everything that had been adopted at town meeting. At that time, those are the minimum percentages that you have to allocate to each of the reserves, the Historical Resources Reserve, the Community Housing Reserve, and the Open Space Reserve. The bottom portion of it, you will see are the amount that needs to be paid for the two bonds that are CPA-related, and that those two amounts are, are also in the general fund budget, because as I've explained before, the general fund actually pays the bond, the CPA fund reimburses the general fund for it. So this is just the other side of it. It's exactly the same as last year, approximately $250,000 that we estimate in revenues, and part of what we do with the CPA fund is when we get the actual final amount, we do make the necessary adjustments, so it does always stay 10%, 10%, 10%, and 65%. And that is everything.
Seems so much easier than the subcommittee.
[laughing].
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So I'm gonna open it for public camera. Actually, there's no public camera, we'll close the hearing and, we'll close the public hearing and have the council, address the council. So at this time, I'm gonna do the motion to close the public hearing on 19 fiscal year budget. Someone?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So I don't know what, how much more discussion we can have on this document, but we have a whole bunch of motions to make. So I guess I'll start it off. Motion one is, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate $57,385,262 for town purposes and charges in anticipation of revenue for the 12-month period beginning July 1, 2018 in accordance with General Law, Chapter 44, Section 4, and all acts and amendments thereof, and including in addition there to, Chapter 849 of the Acts of 1969 as amended for the operation of the town departments as contained in the Town of East Long Meadow operating budget as printed in a chart with this presentation, a copy of which is attached to this motion is made a part here of by reference entitled "General Fund Uses, General Fund Operating Budget Fiscal Year 2019." Is there a second?
Second.
Good. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I move the town vote to raise and appropriate $100,000 to be added to the stabilization fund account, 8216, for the purpose of setting aside funds for future expenditures.
Second. It's moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Paul's not here. Mike?
I move the town vote to raise an appropriate $100,000 to be added to, to other post-employment benefit liability trust, referred to as OPEC, number 8225.
So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Joe?
I move the town vote to raise an appropriate $75,000 to fund the compensated absence reserve account, number 8226.
So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Tom, I think you gave me all the loans. Motion five, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate, transfer and reappropriate borrowed capital projects for the 2019 fiscal year, total sum of $6,966,952, for the purposes in the amount set forth in the chart published with the presentation, a copy of which is attached to this motion is made a part here of by reference entitled "2019 Capital Planning Projects as Recommended by the Town Manager as follows. Raise and appropriate for general fund capital projects, $744,494, to be bonded and paid from the general fund capital projects, $5,566,695, for a total of $6,311,189 for general fund capital projects. To be bonded and paid from the Sewer Enterprise Fund, $385,072, and from the Water Enterprise Fund, $270,691." Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion six, I move the town vote to raise and/or appropriate, appropriate $580,792 by borrowing or otherwise for the construction, reconstruction, and/or maintenance.
by borrowing or otherwise for the construction, reconstruction, and/or maintenance of public ways to be expended under the jurisdiction of the Department of Public Works and said some to be reimbursed by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move and second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I move the town vote to raise and appropriate $2,845,933 to the water enterprise fund for fiscal year 2019 as printed in the presentation, a copy of which is attached to this motion and is made a part hereof by reference entitled Water Enterprise Fund.
Second. Move and second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion eight, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate $2,318,436 to the sewer enterprise fund for fiscal year 2019 as printed in the presentation, a copy of which is attached to this motion and is made a part hereof by reference entitled Sewer Enterprise Fund.
So move.
Second.
Move and second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion number nine, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate $229,400 to the LCAT enterprise fund for the fiscal year 2019 as printed in the presentation, a copy of which is attached to this motion and is made a part thereof by reference entitled LCAT Enterprise Fund.
So move.
Second.
Move and second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion 10, I move the town vote to reauthorize revolving funds for various town departments appropriate pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts general law, chapter 44, section 53 E and a half for fiscal year 2019 as follows. Do you want to read the chart for the record?
Yeah, we can, I guess.
Just leave the revolving funds name and the spending limits.
Just do the first and the last column.
There you go. Just the name and the spending limit.
First and last column?
Yep.
So, under revolving fund, solid waste disposal, number 280593,0060.
Discussion?
Sure.
I don't know who can answer this, but why the increase in the spending limit?
The increase compared to last year?
It was $75,000. It's now $93,000.
Right. So what had been approved for fiscal 18 was to start up a recycling program. And so the recycling coordinator was hired and the recycling coordinator, there were some projects that were planned. And then the department wanted the recycling authority to promote new projects and other things in order to increase recycling and benefit the town. So the recycling coordinator has done that and they have some new programs in education and things like that that they wish to do in order to promote the recycling and increase the rebates that we receive from others.
So this is not for the purposes of salaries?
No. No change in salaries.
And actually, last year, if I recall correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the $75,000, because this was the first year of the program, was an estimate. Now with the $93,000, we have a better indication of how much we can bring in.
Question asked. Okay. Are we sort of clear on that? So continuing on revolving fund, council on aging, number 2809, $12,195. Again, revolving fund under the health department, number 2812, $500.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's move and second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Number 11, I move the town vote to accept the recommendations of the community preservation committee and appropriate from the community preservation fund reserve for fiscal year 2019 from the revenues estimated to be $250,000 for the purpose and amount as follows. Administrative expenses, 5%. Historic resource reserve, 10%. Community housing reserve, 10%. Open space reserve, 10%. Undesignated general reserve, 65%. In that, the town transfer from the undesignated general reserve to the town's general fund to reimburse the town for the following. Number one, pool bond payment of principal and interest, $52,000. Number two, brown property payment of principal and interest, $57,680.
Move and second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion 12, I move to increase the water rates from $3.05 to $3.20 per 100 cubic feet for fiscal year 2019. Said rate has been factored into the water enterprise fund for fiscal year 2019.
So move. Second. Move and second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And motion 13, I move to increase the sewer rates from $2.95 to $3.10 per 100 cubic feet for fiscal year 2019. Said rate has been factored into the sewer enterprise fund for fiscal year 2019.
So move.
Second.
Move and second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And so I have one final one. So I have the motion to accept the, all motions is proposed by the finance director and this board relative to the fiscal year 2019 budget.
So move.
Second. Move and second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Do we need to do a little conference?
Nope.
Because we're all unanimous, right?
Now we can move to 11. Yeah. We have nothing for executive session tonight, so a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.